Alright, good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Verona Township Council on Monday, September 11th, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Public Meetings Act compliance statement?
The requirements of the Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Township Council. Time and meeting date were included in the public meeting notice along with the public internet link and telephone call in information. Said notice and the meeting agenda was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona City Register, and the Star Ledger. At least forty-eight hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and public handouts can be viewed online at www dot veronaj.org slash council meetings. Public comment period will be held and the orders listed on the meeting agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time.
Hi, Madam Clerk, would you please call it all?
Councilman Holland?
Here.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Here.
Councilwoman Roman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Here.
Mayor Tamboro?
Here.
Mayor, also present today is Township Attorney Brian Aloya, Chip Manager Joseph Diarco, myself, Niskel Sher, Jennifer Kents.
Thank you. Please stand for Pledge of Legions, followed by a moment of silence. We lost on September 11th and many years have followed. Pledge of Legions. I'll report to the mayor. First up, Mr. Poltreras, just kind of with the PAs on.
Evening, Mayor and the Council. On this sad day, September 11th. We had our event at Igoroff this morning, very well attended, and just as. But hopefully in the future you can attend and see how people come and look through, just the cycle on, it's amazing. First on the agenda is, on September 21st, the County Executive will have a golf happening at Burn Arena, Burn, Brendan Burn Golf Course. It funds the foundation, Park Foundation. On September 23rd, at the Essex County Environmental Center, it's the Family Full Festival. And it runs from 11:00 to 3:00 PM, and that's at 621 Igorock Avenue, and that's in Roseland. On the 23rd and 24th, the Fine Arts and Crafts Festival is at Anderson Park from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that's Old Craft and Bellevue Avenue in Montclair. Let's see. Also on the 23rd of September, it's Turtleback on Tap, which is a wonderful event at Turtleback Zoo. There is a fee for it, but like I said at last meeting, it's a wonderful event, it's a fun event. Going into October, October 7th. It's the House All Hazardous Waste Program at 99 Bradford, and the hours are from 3:30, from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. And on the 21st is our Computer Electronic at the same location, 99 Bradford. And that's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On October 20th, on a Friday, out from Montclair Avenue, it's Iris of Glows. And then I also have our Essex County Senior Wellness, and that is on Tuesday, October 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. At the Cody Arena, 560 Northfield Avenue in West Orange. And going back to the Family Full Festival, if you'd like to make pre-registration, the phone number is 973-228-8776. And another person, but anything else from the council, mayor?
Any questions, council question, comments? No, thank you, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, council outing to the Turtleback on Tap would be appropriate. Jay, we'll see you there?
Absolutely.
Alright, the mayor's report today, I first wanted to thank everybody who coordinated today's 9/11 remembrance. Especially our Township Administration, our Public Information Officer, Anderson Orkbrook, Police Department, Fire Department, Rescue Squad, Department of Buildings and Grounds, Department of Public Works, our school system, my fellow council members. It really was a nice day and a well-attended morning. For anybody who would like to read my full comments, I believe they're on the township website, on social media channels as well. But just for those here tonight, we can't forget that Verona did suffer loss related to 9/11 in Billy Irwin and Stephen Roach, and also Verona Rescue Squad member and University Hospital paramedic Ryan McCormick. And I ask everybody to think about them and the legacies that they've left for their family and the town as we remember each year, as Verona will never forget. I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of Stretch Plus on Saturday. It was wonderful to see, it's yet another business being opened in Verona by Verona residents. Who are just really enthusiastic to part, they took a building and made it beautiful and really made an area that needed some rehabilitation look great. So I encourage everybody to check out the Stretch Plus Fitness Complex. Wanted to take a moment, now that the pool season is over, to thank all of the pool staff for an extraordinary season. We had wonderful feedback, I did my customary stop-ins, and the pool was busy. And everybody was very pleased with how it looked and the fun that they were having, and many of those family traditions continued. So thank you to our managers and all our staff, the college students and high school students who work there in the summers, and really make it a safe opportunity for everybody. And finally, Governor Murphy did proclaim that this is emergency preparedness month in the state of Jersey. So I would be remiss if I did not recognize our Emergency Management Office, that largely operates under the radar coordinating things and planning. Our Coordinator Joel Martin, our First Deputy Coordinator Chris Kiernan, Deputy Coordinator Connor McCann, Deputy Coordinator Mark Steinberg, do a phenomenal job in keeping the township prepared for events and that help to mitigate any threats that do come toward the town. And that is my report for today. Just for the public education, there is one piece on the agenda, it's proclamation for Susan DeWitt. Mr. DeWitt has not arrived here yet, so when she does, we will make that presentation, but in the meantime, we'll move on to the management's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I move to my regular agenda, I do have P10K from Boswell Engineering here to renew the long-awaited community center playground.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As Joe said, I'm P10K from Boswell Engineering. The township has submitted two applications to the community development for grant funds. And the first is the community playground, and the second is for the senior center. And I'll go with the playground first. Previously, the borough has secured some grant money for the playground and equipment. We are applying for funds for the bathrooms at this point in time. And I've had communication with the community development folks last Friday and answered some of their questions and the part of the application process to have a public hearing on the, on the applications to give the council and members of the public opportunity to comment on it. So I'm going to bring up my my associate, Rob Gross, who is in the process of designing this, and he can explain a little bit more about the playground, because we are on the same page.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Let's briefly go over our preliminary design layout for the Green Sand Playground. It may be familiar to some or many of you, as it's sort of a design that's been kicked around, my understanding, for a couple of years now.
I'm sorry, they can't see on the camera.
Thank you. So the, the basis of design, there's really two aspects to it, there's the playground component and the restroom component. We'll start with the playground component. The design is, is essentially based off of a layout that was provided by the manufacturer Landscape Structures to the township previously. We've essentially taken that design, made a couple of modifications to make it fit within the space, it's sort of geographical constraints that we have. The playground consists of about 5,000, 4,500 to 5,000 square feet of, it will be a fully ADA accessible playground, promotes inclusivity. And that is sort of exemplified by some of the pieces that, that either Township and Landscape Structures have sort of decided upon for this, for this space. They will also incorporate a handful of adult exercise equipment pieces that the, my understanding is the township has previously procured. So that will be incorporated into the space as well. The second piece, as I mentioned, will be a, will end up being a precast modular restroom structure off to the side there, sort of off against the fence line along, I guess that's the west wing of the property of Veterans Field. We're still going through the, the final details of what that restroom structure will look like, but it'll, it'll be some combination of either a men's and women's restroom. If the Township chooses, then we can include either one or multiple gender-neutral rooms as well. So some of those finer details we can end up hashing out, but generally this is the layout we're looking at. Are there any specific questions or concerns or comments that the mayor council would like to make currently regarding the design?
Councilman? Yes, thank you. Thank you for jumping in on this project, it has been a long time coming. One concern we may have received from some residents is that we have child playground equipment and then we, which is all going to be ADA accessible, which makes this playground unique and, and fun and innovative, so we're very excited. And then we also have exercise equipment for the adults, but we're concerned like that the kids may like run like right from the slide to this adult equipment, and there was talk maybe of putting some sort of wall or separation between these two areas. Has that come up at all in your design, or did anyone communicate that to you?
That, that hasn't been communicated to us. I, I wouldn't call it a concern, but certainly if that is a, it's not a concern really on my end, but if it's a concern of the councils, it's certainly something we can evaluate it. Thinking out loud here, probably something like you can do something expensive, perhaps like a landscape wall, things sort of separate the two, something slightly cheaper would just be some additional chain link fencing to sort of provide some separation there. We could also incorporate it in, in some other space, in its own space entirely. But that's, you know, we're open to sort of some of those recommendations from you guys from an engineering standpoint, and just really a use standpoint, I'm not overly concerned with it, but I don't also see any issue with providing some sort of separation, I wouldn't say that's a bad idea, so.
Yeah. I don't know, you know, though you threw out a couple of ideas, or maybe there could be something else that's thought of, but I think the concern is that the kids won't, won't understand that that area is adult exercise equipment, especially little children, like, you know, rated five years old, and so is there some way just to visually separate it, but maybe not exclude it, like chain it off, so it's not one cohesive space? That's just my initial concern, and I think what's been raised by some members of the community.
Okay, fair, understood. I, I would certainly be remiss if I didn't comment that, you know, a lot of that is unfortunately would have to be taken care of almost by parental supervision too.
Yeah.
To not let just kind of the kids run roughshod over the playground, but at the same time, you know, the parents can't watch everything, so some sort of barrier or an understanding of a, of a difference, separation between the two.
Yeah, maybe.
We can start considering that.
And just so you know, this playground is often used by families who may have children who are off playing soccer on the field, and the younger ones are on the playground, so they may have one eye in one place and one in the other, but yeah, so that's just one idea, and also for safety for the children.
Fair enough.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Gross, I'm looking at, is this for the children's side here, is this? Could you tell me what exactly the squares with the X is? Are these, is this equipment set already? And what exactly is it?
So the, the squares with the X is through them are the, and you might see it a little bit better in sort of isometric view on the top right. Those are just canopy structures, provide some shade to the playground.
And they're over equipment?
Yeah, we're essentially over it.
Okay, so, so my concern here is, is this all fencing, because I know right behind the, the center one there is, are the controls for the lights?
Yep.
The electrical box, that's all going to be fenced off, separate area, separate entrance to that, or is there going to be entrance off of this playground?
It would be a separate entrance, separate from, you wouldn't, you wouldn't go through the playground to access that equipment, we'd separate that.
Something.
Awesome. Looking at this, it looks like the closest marked handicap accessible parking lot is on the building side of this, behind the community center itself. The only thing I suggest we take a look at is to ensure that the route across the roadway there is appropriately pitched, so that somebody can actually travel from that parking space to the, to the sidewalk ramp to this playground.
Sure, I mean, we could also, I don't know exactly the, the layout and uses, we could consider potentially converting that first space that's directly adjacent to sort of the playground area there to a handicap accessible space, now that this is going to be sort of a, I don't say new use, because I know it was a pre-existing use, but probably get a little bit more use than it did in the past. So something, you know, simple as restriping those two spaces there to make it more, or handicap accessible.
And I thought about that also, and asked, but parking at that community center is very much in demand, so obviously we, you know, even two spots matters, but that's another way. That, that would be a fall back position, but it would be worth making, be able to act to this.
We will certainly then evaluate to make sure that the path that is currently there from the handicap space is also accessible, not just to the community center, but to the playground as well.
I, I would just follow up on that comment, I think since we're building such and investing so heavily on this ADA playground, I think it's going to attract, you know, people even from out of town, so I think converting one or two additional handicap spaces is probably really future thinking, and I'm glad that you raised that, especially putting two spots right there. I mean, this is going to get used coverage once that gets in. Because I believe, if my understanding is correct, like this is totally wheelchair, all the, all the equipment is wheelchair accessible for children, I believe, or at least a big portion.
A big portion is, is wheelchair accessible, yes.
Yeah, and there's not many playgrounds like this, even in Essex County, so I think converting one or two spots right next to the playground to handicap is a great idea.
There, there are minimum requirements these days for the amount of components you need to have that are ADA accessible, and I will say that this, this playground design exceeds those minimum requirements for sure.
So, I'm sorry, my thing, so we had talked about, but maybe this idea can come to fruition, and I'll direct this one to Joe. Or excuse me, Mr. Diarco, that the equipment that we have for the adults is not ADA accessible, were we going to leave in a few pieces that was ADA accessible for the adults?
I believe we, we were doing that.
Or in some of the adult exercise equipment?
With pieces already procured or additional?
No, additions.
Okay. Yeah, there is, I do want to sort of finalize, I know, I believe Joe is yourself or someone had sent over Pete some, some paperwork of stuff you've already procured, but I do want to finalize some of those details of what you have. And then if you want to supplement it with, because they do offer, you know, wheelchair accessible pieces of exercise equipment as well, make sure we can supplement it with, with those respective pieces.
Thank you, and Mr. Diarco, if, I think we're probably in agreement about having some handicap spaces properly arranged onto the more side of the lot. Think on the separation between the two, be helpful to see a price point.
Yeah. Maybe something with like pops or something, I, some happy medium.
So yeah, I think there are probably some positive ways of doing that. Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Mr. Kinke?
Yeah, I would add, I'm thinking about the handicap parking spaces, since knowing what I know about the parking lot, it's on a slope, so I may look into, to make it ADA accessible, it's got to have very little slope, so we might want to incorporate that into a future road program, rather than have a playground contractor do pavement work. Yeah. So I'd like to get this out to bid, and then we'll, we'll look at that as part of another program. With somebody who's got that expertise and will have time to get the proper grades done, so that's okay with that, I'd like to, I think it's, it's more prudent for the borough and cost effective.
That's a reasonable.
I would say just add right there, before you move forward with that, maybe revisit the site. Is where those parking spots are, it's pretty level from there into the, it might even be downhill a little bit. So I think switching to, at one point, Councilman Roman, to bring up on this. But if we did the accessible space with the, they have the area between for the wheelchairs coming out the side of a van. That might be a perfect spot to go directly in to the playground. Correct, so I think revisit.
We're going to have to do some additional survey, because we didn't survey the parking lot just the playground area, so, as you know, very sensitive on grades.
Yes, absolutely.
When you do ADA, you want to respect that. So, okay, the second part of the application is for the, or the second application is the senior center. And what, the idea, idea there was that we, as you're aware, the second floor of the building has an open area, porch-like area with open windows, not really windows, but open spaces, and what happens is that the weather elements come into the porch area, and it's not been waterproof properly, or waterproof has since deteriorated to a point where it seeps downstairs. So what we're proposing is to enclose those open spaces with windows. Do something with the floor, and also repair the downstairs dam, the room downstairs where the water has seeped in. We, if we, if the grants approved, we'll coordinate, of course, with the Building Department, make sure anything we design is building code compliant. And that would be, that, that grant, we estimate in about $60,000 will be requested.
Effectively creating a Solarium type.
Correct, and then something, once the space is enclosed, gives the senior people and the township opportunities to do something with it. That's, that's weatherproof.
Expands the use of space.
Yes.
Sort of, I've used that one times, and the outside is strange.
That's correct, one of the suggestions was to remove the fire escape, but I'd have to confer with the building code official and fire, for egress, for the second floor before I do that.
Any questions on that item?
Okay, maybe open it to the public, just to complete a public hearing, and we, so include his word.
Madam Clerk?
Yep. We're good.
Just read the public participation statement for this person, this time I'm going to open for public participation on the playground we designed.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to read the public participation, because usually on a hearing like this, you allow the people just to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, just, yes, right, okay.
Is it possible to post, are these plans posted online for the public?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anybody from the public in the room like to comment on the playground design? Anybody at home? A comment is noted? Yes?
Can I just confirm that the rec committee is going to get a copy of these plans, I'm not sure if they've seen them, and are meeting us next week? Okay, great, so it's the rec committee.
You need their, yes.
Yes, because I think those are some engaged residents that would actually have a lot of feedback on it, so.
It's important, it's timely too. Do you have a comment on the senior center? Just to conclude, we covered both?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that can conclude our presentation on the, on that, I don't know if there's any other questions while I'm here.
I remember the public comes up with a question, you can always ask it during the standard public comment sessions, we'll get it to you.
Thank you very much.
Those public, public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Have you heard a motion? Sort of second? Second. Alright, moved by Councilman Roman, second by Deputy Mayor McAvoy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Diarco, with your permission, can we, if there's no opposition from the council?
We'll leave this here.
Actually, why don't we move that? Alright. We are going to take a pause from the management's report to go back to the mayor's report, for our proclamation for Ms. Sue DeWitt. Ms. DeWitt, that's right? In the back, she thought she could get out of the, out of the Udest building, that she wouldn't have to come back, but maybe to broader. So the proclamation reads, whereas Sue DeWitt retired from the Township Verona Police Department, effective August 1st, 2023, after 31 years of service, and whereas Sue DeWitt served as a dispatcher, senior dispatcher, and basic communications and mercs medical dispatch instructor. And whereas Sue DeWitt has devoted much more to our community, serving as a member of the Verona Rescue Squad for the past 41 years. And whereas throughout her service on the Verona Rescue Squad, Sue has helped the offices of Crew Lieutenant, Assistant Treasurer, Treasurer, Recording Secretary, Responding Secretary, Assistant Captain and Captain, and also served as President of the Rescue Squad for a combined total of 13 years, from 1995 to 2013. Whereas Sue DeWitt has responded to over 4,700 Rescue Squad calls, and is one of the most prolific responders in squad history. And whereas Sue has also served as chairperson of the New Jersey State First State Council 6th District, and was New Jersey First State Council historian for over a decade. And whereas Sue has taught courses for our police department members and volunteer rescue squad, and most recently was charged with the training of our school crossing guards. And whereas it is a milestone that signifies the peak of rewarding career, and the beginning of a new chapter in life, one we hope is even more rewarding and final and fruitful. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Dr. Christopher Tamboro, Mayor of the Township Verona, congratulate Sue DeWitt. On her retirement, on behalf of my fellow council members, employees of the township, and the residents of Verona, we offer heartfelt gratitude for her service, dedication, and many contributions to the Township of Verona. Wish her and her loyal Papa Murphy continued happiness in the years to come. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Township of Verona, New Jersey, to be affixed this 11th day of September in the year 2023. Congratulations, Sue. Add one personal note that is not in here, I've known Sue for, for the past 13 years, even before I lived in Verona, maybe 15. And Sue is an extraordinary font of institutional knowledge, and no matter where she is or what she's doing, she is always there to answer questions and provide guidance, and I know the Rescue Squad appreciates it, and we're, we're thrilled for you. Retiring, thanks again. Everybody could come forward, the council? Ms. DeWitt? No, it's alright, you were, we have to compete for who was in longer.
Am I ready? One, two, three. Two, three. Good.
Are we get all the Rescue Squad and please start us here?
Yeah.
In a minute, come on up, guys.
I think it's driving me crazy. Alright.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Diarco, we are back to you, sir. Thank you for your thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to jump to item seventeen, the I-Bank, uh, covers, uh. PFOs and, uh, the Claridge pump station. Jennifer Amis here. We had a call this morning. With the I-Bank and bond council. I want to bring you up to date.
Hello. So, yes, we had a call this morning with all of our engineers and, um. Bond council. Um, so we have figures for, uh, Lynn Drive Wells and Fairview Wells. So you will be seeing that on September twenty-sixth. Uh, we were told that, my disclosing numbers. Okay, um, we were told that Lynn Drive would be about four million. And Fairview would be about five million. Um, as you recall, we did an original five hundred thousand and then we just did a supplemental for five hundred thousand. That is not included in the additional nine million. Um, we were also told that the state of New Jersey is, um, giving. Principal forgiveness on PFOs. Uh, we were told up to two million dollars. So, uh, we are going to split the projects. Move Lynn Drive first, because that one is ready to go. If we can split the projects. Uh, it will allow us to gain the most amount of money because there'll be separate projects. So if we can hold off on Fairview till after the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three ends. Uh, June of twenty-four, we can move into Fairview and get all of the funding that were allowed for Fairview. So we're going to split the, uh, projects in the I-Bank, which we've already have. Uh, that way it will allow us to recoup the most money with principal forgiveness through the state of New Jersey.
Great. Any questions from this?
Thank you. So, okay. So right now, we have been informed by I-Bank that we have been granted four million dollars for Lynn Drive. We would be proceeding with Lynn Drive, no?
So not from the I-Bank. We've been told by the engineers that it would cost four million dollars for construction.
Okay, what would the, the I-Bank be providing beyond the two million dollar principal forgiveness?
So the I-Bank is where we borrow the funds from.
Okay. So we would be borrowing four million dollars.
Through the I-Bank, yes.
Through the I-Bank, okay. So that, that is what I intended with my statement. And then of that two million dollars, that would be principal forgiveness.
Yes, through the state of New Jersey.
And what is the interest on the rest?
What is the interest on the rest? We don't know until we start borrowing down from it.
Okay, so they, they.
We're not at that point yet, yeah. Once we can do a, um, a loan from them. So the process is, which, Mr. Diarco and I are learning a whole bunch of. Um, how this, how this flows into, um, the whole process. So first, we have to have the bond ordinances in effect. They have to be introduced and adopted. Then that portion is put into the I-Bank by the engineers. Once, uh, we, it's kind of a two-step process between the I-Bank and NJDEP. So NJDEP has to allow us to have all of our permits ready. That's one part of it. Our ordinances have to be in, in place. For the engineers to then upload all the information to, for me then to eventually, um, well. They will allow us to take a construction loan. Once we take the construction loan, that's through the I-Bank. So it's kind of a multi-layer. Um, program. So we have to have approval, we have to have the ordinances in place, we have to have approvals from NJDEP on all of our permits. I-Bank will, um, authorize the construction loan and then we can start going down on the construction loan.
So what are you anticipating to bring to us at the next council meeting?
The next council meeting, you will have two additional supplemental ordinances. For four million dollars for Lynn Drive and five million dollars for Fairview.
It's very expensive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Like I said, the hope, um. Is to have the principal forgiveness from, from the state of New Jersey. Um, since they're giving that out currently, since every, a lot of people are having PFOs issues and they're trying to, um. Help and assist in that. So we, I, like I said, I, I keep saying the same. I want to be on the train and I don't want to be at the station when that happens. So, um. You know, as long as we have the ordinances in place, we have the, um, approval from DEP. Then we can take out the construction loan.
So we can do, we can do both ordinances next meeting, even though we're waiting until the next fiscal year for.
Fairview to move, yes. And that is only just to gain us an additional million dollars in. Principal forgiveness.
And that is, uh, state principal forgiveness. Uh, we haven't heard anything from the federal government. So that's still hovering out there that the federal government may be providing funding.
And settlement figures.
Exactly. You registered with the I-Bank, uh, early in twenty twenty-two. Yeah, uh, just to get us into this, into the station. I love that phrase. Um, and you really, you went to school on the I-Bank. Um, the interest rates are lower than the traditional interest rates significantly. Uh, it's one of the reasons we wanted to jump in, in there. Uh, so most of it is all in line at this stage of the game. Um, Jacobs Engineering is the firm that's been working on all your, uh. It packages your specs, the approvals with DEP, and you've read all that correspondence as the municipal events have been on a regular basis. Um, and we're really in position, very good position.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Roman, um, go this way and then that.
Just a quick follow-up. I, you said to get another million dollars on Fairview. Was that a million dollars of principal forgiveness or two million dollars principal forgiveness on Fairview?
So it wasn't very clear in our meeting today. They said two million dollars in principal forgiveness. But they recommend us split the projects so that one, uh, which would be Lynn Drive is moving. Um, and is basically ready to go from what we've been told. Um, and then if we can push off Fairview until, they said, July fourth, July fifth. Um, of next year, that way we could get an additional million dollars in principal forgiveness.
Two million total.
Two million total, I believe. That's what they were saying on their, um, on the call today.
And Mr. Diarco answered a little better the question about interest rates than just, that I had, just in general, those are classed lower than us. Uh, otherwise bonding on open capital markets. They are subsidized interest rates essentially. Um, and then are there any time limitations for the principal forgiveness? Do we have to meet any construction targets or?
That I don't know. We'll have to follow up with them again, but. Yeah, um, we're, we're learning. It's a learning. Um, but I'm not sure about that.
Councilman McGrath?
Um, no, I don't have any.
All right, Deputy Mayor, any?
I just, can we get confirmation on the two million dollar principal forgiveness? Whether it's two million dollars per project or, because if you have to wait to a subsequent fiscal year, it's a, it's a subsequent I-Bank. Process as well, like they, they go through, can't remember what they call the water year essentially. But if you're waiting later, like ostensibly, it wouldn't be splitting the payment that you could have gotten this time. So I, I would really appreciate that.
Sure.
Because that's potentially a lot of money for our residents.
Yeah.
Do, do you have a, kind of a ballpark, park figure on what using the I-Bank would save us in the bonding cost?
That I don't know.
If you could get that, that would be also.
Sure. We have, um, so back in two thousand and two and two thousand and four. Uh, we did take out infrastructure loans through, um, the I-Bank, so I can give you a copy of those as a comparison as well. To see, I, I know that's a long time ago, but that may give you. Kind of a basis, but I was told that they can't really tell you what the interest is going to be until you start borrowing from it. So, and go forward on the funding portion of it. But we can try to figure out if we can get some sort of basis.
Any questions from Mrs. Mascara? Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right.
Um, yeah, item number seven on my agenda is the Everfield. Uh, NECLI Engineering will be in here, uh, next meeting. Uh, to present their, uh, concepts on Everfield and to accept, um, your comments and recommendations of. What additional items you'd like to see as a council. So that'll be in your September twenty.
Six.
Six meeting.
And they'll have. To us beforehand.
Yes, it'll be in advance.
Thank you. Will there be any engineers cross testament to bill?
Yes. Your solid waste recycling contracts are out, the bids are out. Uh, we should be getting the, uh, the bids in on November eleventh. And that is, uh, being handled, council is still, uh, on item sixteen, special, special meeting of planners. We're waiting for the final comments that you're asked to have sent out to them. And hopefully that'll be in, at the end of the month, the exact date I gave them to get it in. Um, CDBG, we just went through that. It's on the discretionary funding that CDBG has. Um, and you were, we were committed to that playground inch double ready, we're going out to bid. So you're in, uh, on that discretionary funding from CDBG, which is funding that's sitting there that towns didn't spend. The municipal space, uh, on ballot, you did, it's on the ballot, the draft was provided to me by the clerk. And you saw the piece that was prepared by the public information officers. You also asked any additional comments that you may have. Uh, staff has worked on that, myself, Brian, public information officer, you, you have draft three or four. And we're ready to go with that. If there's no further comments on it. Uh, then we need to get that out to the public. So you had some advanced campaigning on that. Um, two personnel items, uh, you, uh, have the resignation, uh, retirement of, uh, Jim Cunningham from Recreation. Um, I will be sitting down with Brian on recommendations for the restructuring of your Department of Community Services. There is some, uh, layering issues in that structure, which would be an ordinance change. And hopefully I'll have some comments for you at the next meeting. So you can review that, comment to me, your feelings about the restructuring that I'll be recommending. We are posting the position as required internally and we'll be advertising later also. And, uh, publicly officially announced to the public is your deputy township manager. Um, Kevin O'Sullivan has accepted the position and will be starting, uh, October second, I believe. Will be baptism by fire because I will be away at the International City Managers Conference that week. Uh, when Kevin starts.
That's a, that's a very good welcome to, to Verona. We'll just try to stop our, um, our habit of having a crisis at the beginning of every month in town. Well, uh, we'll do that. Um, well, any questions from the council, Mr. Diarco?
As we mentioned, Mr. O'Sullivan's background and we were.
Yeah, I was, that was gonna be what I kinda asked. The first thing I just wanted to do before we did that, now that it is public, is recognize. Um, the retirement of longtime director of community services, Jim Cunningham. Um, Mr. Cunningham has been a, um, a very visible force in our community services department and has accepted more responsibility over the years. Um, and has been a, a present face. Um, it's so much of our programming and, and helped, uh, helped a lot of community members over the years. So I thank, uh, Mr. Cunningham for his time of service. Um, and I was, yes, going to invite Mr. Diarco to share a little bit, as much as he would like, about Mr. O'Sullivan, who we're very excited to have starting.
I'd, I'd be happy to, Mayor, although I did wear his resume with me. Um, Kevin is an experienced administrator. He is presently the administrator in North Caldwell. Um, he is, uh, certified manager. He's also an engineer. Uh, he brings with him a number of years of credentials and had previously worked as an engineer with an engineering company. Uh, one of which we were using. I've worked with him previously. Uh, I think he's an excellent candidate for you.
Mr. Diarco, we look forward to welcome, welcoming him. Um, and we will all not try to call him on the same day while you are up at the conference. Where is that, here at the city managers?
I will be in, I will be in, uh, Texas at the International City Managers Conference. I would have, uh, postponed this one, but, uh, the fleeting years of my fifty-five years of. Municipal service, continuous service is that, that conference of being recognized for that. Um, actually, the closest person to me in the entire United States is forty-five years of service.
Wow.
And since it's the international city managers, which means it's worldwide, the closest one to me is thirty-five years of service. I'm not sure if that's good or bad.
I think it's a benefit to us.
Mr. Diarco? All right, we're gonna move on to council members' reports. First up is Deputy Mayor McAvoy.
Start with congratulations, Mr. Diarco. All right. Congratulations to, uh, Scratch Plus for their, uh, we had the ribbon cutting this weekend. As many of us attended, Eric and Chelsea, uh, as mentioned before, are Verona residents, so we, we wish them well. Uh, also, this is at a council in the public. The new bookstore in town, the Collective Bookstore, is going to have a ribbon cutting this weekend, Saturday, uh, at ten AM also. All are welcome to attend. It's four sixty Bloomfield Avenue, uh, right across from Verona Park. Uh, this week, we had a sustainable Verona meeting. Uh, they have a lot going on. The, uh. This October, they have solar open house. It's, uh, October sixth through eighth. And they will have national open house this month also. But they are doing on October seventh from one to five PM. Uh, a solar tour of Verona. And they have four, uh, places that have solar installations that you can go and visit between those hours. You can talk with the residents. There's two businesses, uh, or two, uh, excuse me, residential homes. Uh, I'm not gonna give the addresses out, uh. You can, uh, yes, you can, uh, go on and we can find them if you want to email me. Uh, or sustainable, you can get them from them. Uh, Proud Funeral Home is one and the Church of the Holy Spirit is the other. You're welcome. They volunteer that they will be present during that time. And you can go and ask them questions on their installations. Uh, I would recommend if you're gonna pick one. I would visit Proud Funeral Home and see their whole setup in the basement. He is a pretty good presentation. Uh, they are looking for, or they're trying to achieve silver status, uh, into next year. They will be applying for that, uh, next February. We currently have bronze status certification. Uh, also, Sustainable has on September twenty-third from, uh, ten to one. There is an EV crash course in the Verona Community Center. Uh, it's being held for first responders. Uh, and it's basically, uh, a course given by Tesla. And they, they teach first responders what to do and what not to do. If there's an, an EV involved in a crash, because some things, uh, could be done wrong, uh, and obviously. And not be good for the first responders. So I believe they had, have a cap of seventy-five people. Uh, they were at sixty-five, I think, or sixty, a, a couple of days ago, but. A lot of people usually do it last minute when they get their schedules together. So they look to fill that up, uh, to be. Extend, and they, he asked, uh, they asked that I extend an invitation to the council for anybody who wants to, uh, show up. You're more than welcome. Uh, that was, I wanna, uh, commend the mayor, uh, for his, uh. September eleventh ceremony today, uh, very well done. I think a lot of people were, uh. Impressed with this. So thank you for your, your, uh, ceremony today.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to thank, uh, everyone that attended. Uh, our eighth grade from HB, uh, our police, fire, rescue. Uh, Public Works and Buildings and Grounds for their help and also, and all of the town staff that set it up. A very. A very. Good ceremony this year. Uh and lastly, uh last Monday. Uh I would like to congratulate Unico for their annual Labor Day run, it's their big fundraiser. Uh and I would have to. Congratulate the uh the attorney here, Brian Aloya, for his uh personal record, I believe. In in the race, so well done, uh I didn't see him after the first half mile, the rest of the race, except on the turnaround, so.
So confirm Mr. Hoya beat you in the race.
Uh beat me in the race, and I will say he's up one nothing now for all these years, so uh I will tie it up next year. And that is all I have for.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh Councilman Roman.
Thank you. Uh very briefly, and I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Cunningham on his retirement. Although you couldn't really buy the level of passion and excitement that he uh put to that job. Uh anytime we'd see him in an event, running anything, it was obvious that he absolutely loves what he does. Uh so I had a chance to talk with him when I first found out the news and uh. I wish him well and hopefully we're able to uh congratulate him as well. Um the planning board completed its hearings for the One Sunset redevelopment, uh just wanted to. Recognize that was an extraordinarily complex case. Uh that lasted, I believe, the better part of a year or even more, uh with large amounts of witness testimony and evidence, um. Ultimately, these planning board hearings uh do a lot to make projects better, uh and I think that that's something that happened through that hearing. We had outstanding resident participation, obviously, uh the residents uh were rightfully concerned about the change of their neighborhood. Uh I don't wanna minimize it, but uh certainly their their comments uh helped us. With a lot of the decision making, but I just wanted to recognize uh the planning board chair. Uh all the professionals that serve us and all the members of the board for uh making it through a very. A very long uh set of hearings and doing a a very good job for Verona uh in the end result, so just thank you to all my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Graff.
Thank you, um. I just wanna join everyone, um today as we pause to remember. Um all that we lost on nine eleven and um my heart today really was with all of the survivors and their um. Family members of the victims and I attended this morning's. Uh ceremony and it was uh uh very well done as always, um and I wanna thank everyone who participated. Um. I wasn't prepared to uh thank um and recognize Jim Cunningham on his retirement. Uh so I'll save my remarks for that at the next meeting, I did wanna thank the rec department. For another safe uh pool season, um it was uh really fantastic, I really enjoyed seeing the families. Uh utilize the new splash pad space, um we uh started an annual survey process. Um of our pool membership, I really look forward to that continuing and I hope that the administration. Does release that survey soon so that we can gather feedback, we always. Get great feedback from the membership that we can then incorporate into future projects. Um I had um two uh committee meetings this month. Um uh the multicultural inclusion and accessibility advisory committee met the end of October, excuse me, end of August. They reviewed all of their community planning for the fall, they are currently working on an event for Hispanic Heritage Month. I believe they may partner with an existing event at the library's planning, I think this is a great example. Why we have this cross-functional um committee, so that we can join forces um yeah with another entity, this time the library. Um and they're working on some of those details, I don't have something to announce at this time. Um they also uh previewed their um future report that they will be sending to the council. On their walking tour of accessibility that they made of the buildings. Um which they um were accompanied um by our Buildings and Ground Supervisor. Um and so they're gonna incorporate pictures and sound recommendations. Um and some of the recommendations are no or low cost, which are the best sort of recommendations. Um so I wanna thank them on that, and we should be receiving that report later this fall. Uh tonight, the Shade Tree Committee met, um they uh were talking um about a host of items. They are looking for members of the public to join the Shade Tree Committee, uh Commission, excuse me. And they are open with two alternate positions, um please go to our website to apply. Um and I do wanna say they talked um. A little bit about the street redesign project of Boston Whitney and Windermere. And I do wanna just remind that the Shade Tree Commission should be part of planning stages of those redesigned projects. Um. And then I have a, my first uh Neighborhood Traffic and Safety Committee meeting tomorrow on Zoom at seven thirty, I welcome the public to attend. Um I also attended the Stretch Plus opening, what an amazing new business in Verona, congratulations to the owners. And finally, I want to thank the Board of Ed and the Superintendent. Um as part of their back-to-school materials, they provided every um. Family in the district with really important information on gun safety and gun storage safety. And um I know they worked with the Verona Police Department on this and they. Shared the materials from the nationally recognized program, besmart.org. Um for which the councilwoman and I are both current presenters, um. It's really important to normalize the conversation of safe gun storage in not just our community, but every community. Um and this was a huge step forward in doing that, and that communication really will save lives. And um I just wanna thank them and commend them for prioritizing this very important topic. Um and with that, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holland.
Thank you, um as my colleagues have done, I just want to acknowledge and honor. All those who lost their lives on September eleventh, two thousand and one, um it was a very somber morning. Um but it, I think it was a beautiful ceremony and I was grateful to be able to attend. I also want to acknowledge the passing of Joseph Fierdeliso, a member of Governor Murphy's Cabinet, uh president of the Board of Public Utilities. Um son of Essex County, um having lived here his whole life and former mayor and councilman from Livingston. Joe or Papa Joe, as many of us knew him, was a very dedicated public servant, a dyed-in-the-wool Democrat and a tremendous mentor to myself. And so many others, especially women, um. I want to send my sincere condolences to his family and the many people whose lives that he touched in his long and storied career. I also want to say thank you to Township Manager Diarco and Boswell Engineering for coming here this evening with um. The concept plans for the recreation playground and um for seeking the CBDG and CDBG grants. Um for it, um this is a long time coming, there is um equipment that is being discussed as part of that. That has been in storage for many, many years, um so it will be really great um for that project to move forward. The rec committee will be meeting next week and I'm sure they will be very excited to see those plans. Um thank you for referencing um the retirement of Mr. Cunningham, I really just sincerely want to. Thank Mr. Cunningham for all of his work, um for all that he's done for the community, especially the recreation program. Um and wish him well in his future endeavors, cause I I know that this is retirement, but not an end of a story. Um as for Mr. O'Sullivan, as the deputy manager, um I wanna say welcome neighbor and we most certainly have a lot of work for you to do. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh just one thing I neglected from the mayor's report, the Environmental Commission. Is feeding um on a different day, it'll be tomorrow, starting at six PM. Um video conference. Okay, um at this point, I'm going to open for general public comment on any item, Madam Clerk, would you please? Read the public participation statement.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the matter of, um. Please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor, if you're dialing in by phone, please press star nine. If you're attending in person, please approach the lecturer. Once recognized clearly state only your name and township of residence for the record. You're not required to provide your street address, however, if you do, please note that these meetings will be posted on the township's YouTube channel. And addresses will not be redacted for any purpose. You have four minutes to address the council and there'll be no cross dialogue during the public portion. After everyone wishes to speak has been heard, the council may address your comments and or questions. It's open.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, anybody in the room like to join us? Do you care, are all good? Do not see any personal, oh we have one virtual hand. Uh from the Mayor Ryan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh uh good evening. Um I've just a a question for you, I know you're not gonna be able to answer it tonight, but uh. Uh I listened very intently to the presentation by the CFO regarding the uh the cost of fixing the wells. And uh. It I, it is sort of ironic to me that back when we purchased the wells. We we actually did it, uh hoping that it would be a cost-saving measure uh to relieve some of the. Burden of paying the Passaic Valley uh authority for the water that that we were getting. Uh hopefully, uh at some point, uh if it hasn't been already been done. Uh would there be a cost benefit analysis of just looking to see if we just. Discontinued using the wells entirely and just kept buying the water from Passaic Valley. Uh. Would it uh, you know, uh what would be the the break even point or? Uh if 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 it would really be worthwhile, just sticking with Passaic Valley and uh. And uh either either just picking one of the wells or. You know, or uh or none of the wells or both of the wells, hopefully uh as things go on. Uh you could provide that information uh for the public. Uh thank you, that's my, that's my commenting question.
Thanks, Mayor Ryan. Any else? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. Uh Mr. Diarco, obviously, we can't necessarily answer Mr. Ryan's. Point right now, but this is something that has been under your analysis for quite some time.
Yes, it has, I can't answer that.
Once we have more information and certainly as we're looking at water rates and it'll all play into uh this overall conversation, but yes, it. Uh Kevin, this is one of those things that I have been thinking about kind of nonstop as well, so. I look forward to some more detailed analysis from the administration on that topic as we see this moving forward. Good. Moving on to hearing adoption on um. Uh ordinances on second reading. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance on second reading, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight into the record.
Capital ordinance appropriating eleven thousand dollars from the general capital improvement fund for the repair of the elevator located. In the community center in the township of Verona County of Essex, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would somebody please move the ordinance? Uh motion by Deputy Mayor McAvoy, second by Councilman Roman. Now is the time for public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight. The same public comment as was just read will apply. But you have to read it?
I'm sorry, yeah.
No. Go ahead.
Anyone from the public wishing to address this item scheduled for public hearing, please raise your virtual hand by raising the raise hand button on your monitor. If you're dialing in by phone, press star nine. When you're, if you're visiting in person, please push the lecture and when you're recognized clearly state your name for the record. The form is to address the council, please do not provide your address as these meetings will be posted on YouTube. And will not, meeting addresses will not be redacted. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard, the public hearing will be closed, council and our administration may address your comments and your questions before the vote is called. Please avoid repeating items previously discussed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any member of the public care to comment on this ordinance only? Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, is there any council discussion? Uh Mr. Roman.
Uh I did review the proposal that was provided us from the elevator manufacturer, my concern with whether or not this is eligible as a capital expense versus being a repair. Um this is actually an upgrade or an enhancement to the elevator as well as the replacement of obsolete components. Capitalizing this.
Okay, thank you. Agree with that assessment. Anybody else? Okay, uh seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-eight passes five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance on first reading, Madam Clerk, would you please read? The title of the ordinance H one for record.
A capital ordinance appropriating fifty thousand dollars from the water sewer capital improvement fund for the assessment of the water and sewer rate study. In the township of Verona and the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would somebody please move the ordinance? I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Roman, second by Councilwoman Holland, is there any discussions? Uh hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call it?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor H will be numbered twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine, it will be published according to law, a public hearing will be held on September twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, the next item on the agenda is the second ordinance on first reading. Would you please read the title, Madam Clerk, uh ordinance H two into the record?
Fixing the salary compensation of the deputy manager for the two hu- two twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would somebody please move the ordinance?
Go move.
Motion by Councilwoman McGrath, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor McAvoy. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call it?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor H two will be numbered twenty twenty-three dash forty will be published according to law and a public hearing will be held on September twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, moving on to the consent agenda, we have two sets of minutes, Madam Clerk. August seventh and August twenty-first. As well as two resolutions, the first is a tax court judgment refund for block two two lot twenty-three, which is. Blueford Avenue property uh coming back from the tax court and the second is a resolution to go into executive session. We have one license and permit from All American Airport, limo services, Madam Clerk, that permit is in order.
It is.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Like, can we vote on these resolutions, can we bifurcate it?
Uh which resolutions would you like to pull out?
One and two, just, just.
I just want us, okay. Alright, uh because we're approving the minutes as well.
I think you would probably want just K one, because it's a consent agenda, I think you're assuming.
K one, because you wanna refuse yourself on this, okay. Alright, so we're gonna pull K one. At the councilman's request, Deputy Mayor's request. Anything else on that, alright, I was gonna open public comments on the consent agenda only at this time. Public comment, uh statement will apply, just, we're only accepting. Public comment on the consent agenda this time. Good, hearing none, I'm gonna close public comment, this time I will entertain a motion to. Um pros and cons agenda with the exception of K one.
Uh so moved.
A motion by uh Councilwoman McGrath, is her second, sorry, second by Councilman Roman. Is there any discussion from the council? On that. Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor Resolution K two will be numbered twenty twenty-three one five nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, at this time I'll hear a motion on uh resolution K one.
We got the resolution.
Alright, motion by uh Councilman Romans for second. I'll I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, um is there any discussion from the council on this item?
This is for the record, I will be abstaining.
Recusing, accusing myself, alright, accusing myself.
Oh.
Thank you. Any, any discussion on this? Alright, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll on K one?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor uh K one will be numbered one twenty twenty-three dash one six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we do have one addendum resolution. Um on as well, this is the uh community development block ran program uh application. Cycle, one uh million twenty thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Cycle, one, uh, million twenty thousand five hundred eighty dollars for the ADA playground and sixty thousand dollars for the improvements of the senior annex building. We did have a, uh, public hearing on these items before. Um, let somebody please move the addendum. So, motion by Deputy Mayor McAvoy, second by Councilwoman McGrath. Um, before we have council discussion, I am going to open the public comment on the addendum since we have not had that yet. The same public comment statement, the flash. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close public comment at this time. Is there any council discussion on the addendum only? Hearing none, oh, sorry.
I, I do have a quick question. So, Mr. Diarco, the one million, that's to cover adding the bathrooms, which will be wonderful. But will that also help to offset more of the playground costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's an extra money, new money that's available to add on the ground that we already have.
Correct.
But we had already bonded to do the project. Okay. Get shovel ready.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Mayor addendum will be numbered twenty twenty-three dash one six one, um, and it will be submitted to the we need to build the property.
Thank you very much. All right, we are gonna move to new and unfinished business. The first item on the agenda is a redevelopment proposal. Presentation on that regarding the property at three twenty Bluefield Avenue and numbers nine through eleven first street. Um, which town's attorney, did you wanna take a look on this?
Sure, I see the, uh, owners of that property or the individuals who are looking to develop that property are here today and ready to, uh, make a presentation of the council to consider whether or not we should recommend this as an area of new redevelopment to be, uh, planning.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if you please come forward off your name of record. Thanks so much. I'm a town of which you live.
Sure, John McAvoy, um, I live in Essex Falls, New Jersey. I'm a lifelong resident of Verona and a thirty-five-year business owner here in town and probably scattered around town as well. So I have, um, a couple sets of photos here and, um, a survey that I did to, uh, use. Might help. I say so. And then other few proposed ones I dropped off already.
Yes.
Very, okay, so this is my partner Greg, who also, uh, runs business owner. Uh, so what we're here tonight to, to seek is, um, for the two properties of, uh, on Bluefield and Church Streets to be an area of redevelopment and, uh, with a pilot program. I wanted to give you a quick, uh, brief history of the property. John, real quick. Um, oh, three twenty Bluefield Avenue and nine Church Street were owned by the Esser family of Grove Avenue here in Verona for just about sixty-five years. When they retired, they sold the properties to Joe Sitrula. He and his family were there for just about twenty years. Both families operated the business as both two gentlemen from Verona and later in the nineteen fifties, it became Verona earlier. The families ran the store and repair shop as well as managed a wide variety of tenants and repairs on the properties. The introduction of the Big Box, Home Depot, and Lowe's forced the retail repair business to shutter. And my partner Greg and I brought the properties a few years ago from the Sitrula family. Current, uh, condition of the property are as follows. There's currently one retail space facing Bluefield Avenue. These are, should be in the pictures, thank, or circulating. Um, there's one retail space facing Bluefield Avenue with office, office and storage space above it. Attached to this retail building is a three-story, four-bedroom two-bath home. Next to the retail building is a freestanding smaller building that is home to a massage therapy business that includes an office and bathroom. Also on the Bluefield Avenue property, it's a freestanding oversized three-car garage. The garages are all currently leased out to local businesses for off-site storage. On the adjacent property, nine Church Street, there is a large workshop and storage facility that is occupied by a local antique dealer. Attached to the shop building is a three-bedroom, two-story house with an attached rear garage and unfinished attic space. Our goal is to develop the property into a single building that will contain retail space on Bluefield Avenue and a residential component with access from Church Street. We intend to replace the half-hazard collection of buildings that have evolved into a single modern structure that will be both much safer to live in and certainly a lot better when compared to what current, currently exists. We are see, what we are seeking is to be sent to the planning board to look into both properties being deemed an area of redevelopment with a pilot program. Um, I have a short list of what we feel are, um, the benefits to the town of Verona for, for both of these happening. Buildings on the existing properties have various mixed-use structures that are ill-positioned and need redevelopment for the betterment of the community. Number two, a new three-story mixed-use building would provide a modern, desirable retail storefront on the first floor with two stories of apartments above, consisting of approximately six units per floor. The proposed new building construction at three twenty Bluefield Avenue will dramatically improve the aesthetics of the area and provide safer structure for its occupants. The redevelopment of the properties would eliminate the driveway egress at three twenty Bluefield Avenue, which would safeguard the sidewalk area and eliminate water runoff from the existing driveway onto the sidewalk. New sidewalks would be constructed on the east and west sides of the building that would provide safer access to the property area and rear of the building. The redevelopment allows for a well-designed parking area in the rear of the building, which provides parking efficiency to adequately serve those building. Updated real estate tax structure provides additional revenue that would benefit the township and the community. That concludes my presentation. Uh, we just think it's a, it's a collection of, of, of buildings that is in dire need of redevelopment. Um, yeah, the buildings are in decent shape, the, in terms of electric, plumbing, and HVAC, but it's, uh, it's been patched together for so many years, it's, um, in need of.
Questions from the council?
Have you done an analysis from a zoning perspective, see if this is otherwise compliant with land use? Any other variances or required or other changes to zoning?
I do not believe though, that it's, you know, we'll get into that when we get over the planning board, I guess. With my understanding. We'd need a study on that, right?
Well, in order, you know, in order, there need to be developments, if there are, if you are fully compliant with the underlying zoning, then that's one thing, and it's only a pilot, but if you're not, then that, you know, that may be part of the area need to be developed across it, or it becomes a deviation from the planning standards that then has to be granted. Either way, it's, you know, something where if you're going to look for an area in need of redevelopment, you're going to get asked that question.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And there is, it is, this is two levels of, uh, residential over one level of commercial, so.
Right, exactly, but you don't know, you know, setbacks, et cetera, whether you're compliant with everything else in this zone, so.
Uh, Greg Kelly, comment on that. The term zoning and setbacks, which we revised by engineer, um, would allow the footprint of what we propose. So the area redevelopment would, uh, allow us to then gain those setbacks and bump.
Okay, so that is a zoning variant, a zoning change would need to be.
Uh, I saw the council.
Um, ye- yes, I mean, I guess my question is why just not go to the board of adjustment? I mean, because I think some of what you have here, we're gonna, we would like to move in the direction of some of what you're proposing, which is to remove the requirement of equal use. Right now, you're proposing, you know, bottom floor to be, uh, retail and two floors apartment. Our master plan did recommend that we change our zoning so that we, you know, go in that direction, I'll just say broadly. Um, on all of Bluefield Avenue, but we haven't started that project yet.
Okay.
So, but my question is, why not just go to the board of adjustment to see if they would approve this building as you are conceiving it? Uh, you're, right now, you're looking for us to do the projects differently. Are you gonna jump in?
I can certainly jump in, I've spoken to their council, so I, I know the plans are. My understanding is, uh, there are plans preliminarily, I was gonna choke on that word, um, indicate that they'll need a pilot to do this. And the only way to do the pilot is to go redevelopment.
Yeah, okay.
So this process would have to go through that, otherwise they might have to go back, back to the drawing board. Obviously, that's not something we finalize yet or say yes to yet. They go to the planning board, then they can come back to us, and then our experts look at the numbers to make sure that's correct. But they do believe at this point in time that they're going to need a pilot to develop this.
Yeah, uh, a couple of questions. The, I will say this, uh, just to go back, uh, to Councilwoman McGrath's comment. The, I think the recommendation in our master plan was to change the fifty-fifty in the town center. This is extended town center. So currently, the third floor obviously doesn't, it doesn't conform with our, uh, current zoning on this property. And I think that's what we have to look at, the current zoning. Uh, the apartments, you have six, you said, uh,
That's an estimate.
Proximities.
That's a, like, whatever, whatever.
Do you know one bedroom, two bedrooms?
Whatever part of date dates, yeah.
Okay, that's, uh, because that, that will, uh, change your parking requirements here.
Right.
Well, my understanding, that's a good, is it's an area of redevelopment, we would actually create the zoning for this property.
Yes, of course.
So, that's, that's what we're looking at. Of course, but a- as you know very well, uh, parking in town is very limited, so we don't want to overburden the area. Uh, and I was looking at this site plan, I, I looked at the overview. Uh, where the driveway is going is now taking away parking on the street. Uh, or reducing even one or two spots.
On church?
Uh, on church, yeah, so I was, I was wondering, like, obviously, the rescue squad utilizes the parking on that street. Uh, and I'm sure these are details we can get into later on, but would you be willing to say designate two spots for the time being? Hopefully, in the future, rescue squad will be moving, but
Sure.
Designate two spots so that they don't lose parking or we don't lose parking on the street for that. Uh, obviously, you're gonna have a shared parking because retail will be using it at night, uh. I just, uh, that's, that's something we should really pay attention to i- is the parking. Do you have, uh, plans for loading, unloading?
We haven't gotten there yet.
None of that.
We don't even know if the project's viable.
Okay.
So first is redevelopment, then we could pilot if it is, I think all of those details would be worked out.
In order to, I guess, determine that, we probably need some more specifics on exactly what, what, what kind of, uh, areas you're using for, for loading.
Would that be a council function for the council to do, or would that go over the play?
If I get drunk, at this point in time, the council's only looking at the property to determine whether or not you believe it should have a further study to see if it's an area needed, right, redevelopment. All the questions you're asking are great questions, but it's way too far out. They haven't spent, I'll call it, a ton of money on plans.
Yeah, this is just.
Analysis. They're looking at their property saying, listen, this property is, uh, underutilized, is not up to, you know, ceiling heights and all the other stuff that you want with retail, the, the parking is nonexistent, so frankly, you could look at the way it is now, if you're gonna try to open up that shop on Bluefield Avenue again. So they're saying, in their minds, it, it should look, you know, the potential is there for you guys to say yes, you know, board, go ahead and take a look at this and take it from there.
Councilman?
Um, so I believe in response to the question of why this would need to be designated an area in need of redevelopment instead of going to the board of adjustment for variances, the response was that you need the pilot. Are you proposing to explain that to us further about why the pilot financial structure is necessary for this project to move forward?
Just for the feasibility of the project, for it to make sense for us to do. We would need the pilot program for it to be, to, to make sense.
So I think I would like to see much more detail on that, because also you're proposing additional residential units. Um, so I, I would like to get a better understanding of what exactly is being proposed and why it's not feasible to do it in another way. Um, also, not a question for you, but just a general comment. I mean, elsewhere on this agenda, we have discussion of bringing on a planner. Um, and so I do think it's a bit presumptuous or premature for us to be moving forward with recommending a study at the planning board before we've engaged a planner, because I think it's a good opportunity for the planner to take a look at this, um, and make broader recommendations. So that's just a comment that I have.
Let's make a couple of general comments. First, I appreciate you, you coming here for, for and bringing this up. Um, that area has been a bit of an eyesore for a long time, so I appreciate your interest in taking it on, looking at it. Um, I actually lived in the apartment there, in a beautiful apartment, I mean, inside for ten years. Um, but certainly the area, especially a long army corridor, could be improved. Um, I think the, one of the things whenever we start talking about pilot is the impact upon the school system tax base, that always, that is a hot topic issue, town, especially with the addition of, of the affordable housing and things like that. What I think may help to offset, you know, obviously, the school system losing some tax um, benefit from that unless we arrange something, the pilot, at the same point, if you limited your school project, like, one bedroom apartments, that would have a very different, it wouldn't have any added student impact, so that might be something to, to think about to make the project more attractive. And so on, um, as far as the pilot. Um, because you're still in the planning stages and the feasibility stages, just something to put out there, that we're not adding anything that would only take the res- revenue away from, or that, but also, uh, add to the student burden. So just something to think about for adding twelve residential units. Um, Council?
Um, but as a reminder, we do have affordable housing requirements, so with that many units, you would have to have some affordable units, which may generate.
Two?
Yeah, the question is, what are the bedroom forms? Uh, would it be a same, would it be two one bedrooms or be a one and a two, or? You know, you might have to do.
One, yeah, I mean, we could limit, do whatever we could to limit the impact regardless, so. Um, but that certainly does come up.
Uh, as far as, uh, looking at this overall as an area in need of redevelopment, I think, are there eight criteria that you have to? Look, I think it's up to eight now, so it was seven, I think they added an eight. Uh, I, I've heard people say in the past that a- any property in town, when you really look at those eight criteria, can be designated an area needed redevelopment. I, I, I do think this is one that, that could be designated an area needed redevelopment. Uh, seeing the different types of buildings, different shapes, uh, the driveway, I think the benefit, I think you mentioned it, removing the driveway on Bluefield Avenue, I think is a, a big benefit to that area. Uh, so that's, that's just my comments on whether or not, uh, we look at it further. I think by the time this goes to the planning board, I, I think we will have a planner in place, so I think it'd be a good timing for that, and maybe we just, uh, wait till that planner comes on board, so they can be present at planning board, just to opine on, on the, uh, for all pictures.
That's it. Any else from the council? Thank you, Mr. McAvoy. Uh, Mr. Why are our next steps?
Well, I, I guess, if, um, hearing the council correctly, we'll wait for the planner comes, then you'll make the appropriate motion after the planner gives you a little, uh, review.
Is that okay with everybody as far as a course of action?
Yeah. Can I just state on the record that this Mr. McAvoy is no relation to this Mr. McAvoy, so.
It is so noted, it is so noted for the record.
I got this done.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
This is not a Thanksgiving dinner here, Tom. All right, the next, uh, item on the agenda for uh, new or unfinished business, project center. Um, Mr. Diarco did state in his report though earlier that we haven't gotten the full response, some response to back of the planner. So unless anybody would like to discuss it, I think my, um, thought would be to wait till we have that all the information before we engage in this discussion. Any objections to that? I was not aware of that.
It would be wonderful if we, regardless of maybe what you put in your memo, if we could get responses before our next meeting, it would be great.
I will reach out.
Okay.
Couple days before.
Yeah, a couple days before so that we can.
So, we can, we can move that up. If they want our business, they will get the.
It's a couple of days.
They're, they're all right, if we get it. Yeah, the meeting is on a Tuesday, if we get it by Friday, I'm okay with that.
I just also would like to confirm the process. I know from my experience on the council, this is a contract negotiation, there are aspects to fees, um, that were part of the bid proposal. I just want confirmation that, you know, this would be a contract negotiation as allowed by executive session.
Well, the, the proposal fees were actually in the public documents, right? So we wouldn't necessarily, it's a professional services agreement that's open to the public, but like you wanted it to be in closed, Mr. Diarco.
Well, Ryan can determine whether it's an open or closed discussion in the council, but Well, Ryan can determine whether it's an open or closed discussion in the council, but all the firms that you've reached out to were originally on your announcement in the beginning of your professional RF fees. So those firms, those three were on your RF, you wish you could select any one.
Is R P.
Open or closed would be
The R P is.
A decision by the county attorney.
We can review on Wednesday, decide what year exactly we're gonna discuss, because it can probably go to closed session.
Okay, so I mean, if, in my opinion, if we can do it in open, I'd rather do it in open, right, but if if, if we, I would phrase it this way, if we have to do it enclosed, we do it enclosed, but otherwise, let's try to do it in open.
Like I say, you never have to do something like this enclosed, but as the, uh, Councilwoman McGrath pointed out, um, you could get into a heated debate and negotiations, and maybe make a counter offer to somebody to lower a fee or something, in which case it is a negotiation that you want them to hear.
Okay, we'll take your recommendation on that. All right. Um, our next item is appointments for the municipal alliance committee. I'm thrilled that four, uh, additional people are filling what have been open spots for a long time. For Sandra Gianni, uh, Liz Heinz, Carolyn Moy, and Stacy Fuglio. Um, her terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, and twenty-four, respectively. If somebody would like to move these appointments.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Holland.
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman McGrath. Is there any council discussion on set appointments?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and this is, uh, this is huge to see.
Mm-hmm.
Um,
I will.
Not a touch of clerk, does this fill the committee, or do we still have spaces open even after these?
We still have spaces open, but I, the coordinator has, uh, has a plan. She, uh, they'll be reaching out to the other, uh, schools, trying to get a number three school.
This is a, this group here has, uh, just from knowing a lot of the folks on here, as they do represent a couple of different sides of town, a couple ages, that's, uh, that's great to see, and I've um, worked with, uh, Ms. Moy and Ms. Heinz in various capacities before, and they're both been wonderful people, and Ms. Fuglio has come forth and been articulate advocate as well, so this is a great, uh, great group. Okay, um, I'm prepared for your poll.
So. Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Those appointments are confirmed by the chair. And this, for the record, there are two openings remaining.
Opening remaining. Thank you. Okay, I think I'm, I can open for general public comment on any item that anybody would like to talk about. On both. Just say your names and your, uh, township of residence, for the record, please, but not your full address. And any changes in the meeting attendees, so we don't need to say that again.
Yeah. My name is Sandra Zubowski. I have lived in Verona since the end of May, the beginning of June of nineteen sixty. The town has changed a lot. I am sorry to say, not for the better. Approximately three quarters of a week. Three or four years later, after I moved into Verona, we had a water shortage. And lawns could not be watered. My development was new and was populated by people who had been in private homes, probably for the first time. They mostly came from apartment houses. And to them, grass was very important. So everybody started digging wells. People that found water with their own shovel. Other people called them people to do dig wells. And they got water. My husband said, we may as well dig a well. I said, it's ridiculous, risk will come back. Uh, we did call somebody, they tried to dig for three days, and then the gentleman came in and said to me, look lady, if you really, really, really want a well, you're going to have to get a deep water permit and bring in somebody with a big rig. He said, it's not worth it. I'm fine, we never got, didn't get a well. But at that time, I found out that the house is built on some kind of shelf. And you could see it because we took it like the top of a curve. He said, that's very good, it'll make it more stable, blah, 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 blah. Um, I joined, played the, um, tree commission a number of years ago, and found out that there was more than one problem with the trees in our area. They were top rooters, took name of number one, and they were interfering with the power lines. Uh, and they were advised to start to get rid of the trees. Nothing, and stun, was totally ignored. Uh, I can't, I asked a few times, why is it that nothing is ever done in our area? Every other area had, um, there being to be done, other things re-done. Our area seemed to be the often area of Verona. Finally, uh, something was done. Shot, uh, popping on the street. A small amount of blacktop was put on. And I'm sure it's in the, uh, records of secretary, because one of the neighbors, Charlie Correll, by name, used to come to every single meeting and complain about the way the work was done. Seems there wasn't a straight line where the, we stopped and had to start again to do this, the road. Uh, I don't know why he was so upset about it. It wasn't in front of his house, it was in front of my house, and I really didn't care. But that was the only work that was done until this wonderful project that we had just about finished living through.
I'm sorry, but the, the four minute.
About a grant.
Sorry, ma'am, that's the four-minute time limit on public participation has expired. Um, we have another person waiting for a comment. Um, once that person comments, the council votes to allow you more time, we'll do that at that point.
Well, I want you to hire a town manager who is and put it like nicely. Very impolite.
Well, I, I, we appreciate your public comment, but at this point, we have to move on.
And I want to go.
Somebody else.
Must have asked me, Mr. Bowski, I'm living.
This is the Bowski.
Yes.
Already in the progress. Okay, I'm sorry, we, we, uh,
Yeah.
All right, we, we can't have, just being thrown at us.
There is the project, that is the grass, that we have complaining about.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, your, your, um, your time expires. Ma'am, your, your time has expired. We have somebody else waiting for a comment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time, and I will be back at another meeting.
Thank you.
You won't, do not thank me, because I'm sure it's a lie too.
All right, um, next up, we have
It's your turn.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to, you see that um, your time has expired quite a long time ago.
A long time, a long time ago, yes, you wish my time would be sp- expired a long time ago. I thought all the police were coming to arrest me. Come on.
How about we go talk outside?
Okay, um, at this point, we're going to hear from Mayor Emeritus, uh, Ryan. Mayor Emeritus Ryan, you have the floor.
Yes, the, thank you, that's, that's a tough act to follow, uh. The, Kevin Ryan, Verona, New Jersey, uh, I just wanted to make a comment about the presentation from, uh, Mr. McAvoy, uh, not the mayor of McAvoy. Uh, I, I would commend you for taking a cautious approach on, uh, on take, on, uh, looking at the area in need of redevelopment. And as someone who has not been opposed to pilot projects in the past, uh, in this particular instance, I think a lo- a cou- couple of you correctly noted that you are in a a transition period, you have a master plan that you've adopted, but you don't have the zoning ordinances, as I recall, yet to effectuate it, so you're in a very awkward uh, position. And I just wanted to remind, uh, people, uh, about, uh, a situation that developed a couple of years ago with the Verona Place of apartments. Those apartments were originally approved, uh, during the normal procedure. They went before the board of adjustment, got the, the, uh, noted variances, and got, and gotta go ahead to build them. And at one point, the builder actually had to come back and say to the council, I don't have the money to do this under the ad valorem tax structure. He actually ne- needed an area in need of redevelopment, and then to get the pilot program going, uh, to, uh, allow him to obtain the financing to do the project. I think Mr. McAvoy basically alluded to that. And, you know, in talking to residents over the years, uh, I hope you really can be upfront with them uh, about the, you know, the pluses and minuses of a, uh, a pilot program. Uh, they, they're, in the short term, there may not be tax advantages to the town, that's the way those things work out, they're a twenty-year agreement. I've had, uh, people are, uh, uh, very strong opinions one way or the other on that. Uh, the school issue was just one part of it. So, once again, I commend you, uh, for taking a cautious approach on that and, and waiting until you have all the facts regarding, uh, what the planner recommends, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you for the time to comment.
Yeah, Ryan. So anybody else who would like to provide public comment at this time? Hey. Dr. Yold? Welcome.
Alfie Yold, Verona. Uh, I know in the past, we have just purchased the property up on Route twenty-three, and I was just wondering if we had any, uh, further news about the property or the development of the property that might affect the rescue squad, the fire department, or the police department? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yold. Any other public comment at this time? Yeah, uh, hearing none of the closed public comment. I am, uh, thank you to Mayor Ryan for his encouragement on the um, potential pilot piece. Uh, to Dr. Yold, the, uh, the property is actively being, um, uh, designed, so there is a team of, uh, individuals from the town manager's office, uh, the architect, the fire department, police department, rescue squad, putting together wants and needs in order to create a design for a building to go there. Um, the architect has determined that a building can fit there, the parking can fit there, uh, when the two properties combine, which is a very positive development, and that's in stages, and Sir Diarko has set an ambitious schedule for, um, finalizing that and preparing a bid package, which we anticipate actually in the next couple of months, which is a extraordinary timeline. Uh, Sir Diarko, do you have anything to add?
Uh, the mayor, for me, yeah. The design is in phase two, and the architect is met with the three groups, uh, together and administration, um, to get all their, uh, more or less needs, specifications. Now the architect's meeting with each individual group to expedite the process, and then it will come to the council for preliminary designs for the council to review before it's even released to the public. So we are on an accelerated schedule that's going very well, while three groups are working together. Uh, one objective is to produce a building that's cost-effective and there's, uh, economies of scale, rather than three buildings is one.
Sir Diarko? Any other council members which do provide comments or commenters? Hello? Hearing none, um, I'll, at this point, entertain a motion to go into executive session as indicated in the resolution, so. Motion by Councilman Roman, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Hi. At this point, we're going into executive session. Will official action be taken, Sir Diarko?
No.
No, no official action will be taken. We will see you on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of September at the same place, staying open. Thank you very much.